Okay, welcome. Vice Chair Torgerson, it's your show now.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I would like to call the September 23rd, 2021 North Bend Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM on the dot. First, we'll start with the Commissioner's Roll Call. Heather Bush.
President.
James Bogers.
Present.
Olivia Mo.
Present.
And Gary Tao.
Present.
We have Commissioner Blanco and Greenberg are excused for this meeting. So it looks like we have a quorum. At this time, we would like to consider comments from the general public regarding non-agenda items. As a reminder, there will be no dialogue between commissioners and the public. The commissioners are listening and considering your comments, though. Please note that later in the meeting, we'll be taking comments regarding agenda items. So right now, this time is for non-agenda items. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand or make a comment in the chat room. To keep the meeting orderly and efficient, I will call on you. Please state your name and address for the record before sharing your comments, and you'll have three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to have a non-agenda comment?
I see Kevin Rooster raising his hand.
Who is?
Kevin Rooster.
Oh, Kevin Rooster, I cannot see you, but.
I can share my video. Yeah, hi, Kevin Rooster.
Okay, your address?
428 Orchard Ave, Northeast.
Fabulous.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Just a general comment. Kind of love this town and love what the, you know, development has been done. I think we're really conserving kind of the the nature and the beauty of the town. A lot of people like to move here and enjoy the outdoors. And so just a general comment, I know there was a great survey put out by the City Council to gather feedback on people's, you know, what they thought was important for development. And I think one of the overwhelming things that I heard or read from that survey result was that sightlines and keeping, you know, the views unobstructed and just being able to see the nature from anywhere in town and the beautiful mountains. So I would just encourage the planning commission to keep those goals in mind when working on items. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to do a non-agenda item comment? Do you guys see anybody? That might be present.
No, I don't see anybody else.
I don't see anybody.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for your comments, and now we'll close the non-agenda items time period, and we will now review the September 9th Planning Commission Minutes. Commissioners, if there's any corrections or changes, now's the time to address them. Take a moment, take a look at them, and then we'll move forward. Okay, sounds like there's no corrections. Do we have anybody who would like to move that we approve these minutes? Commissioners?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was, is that September 9th? I'm looking at my calendar. Yeah, okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission's September 9th, 2021 meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
I wasn't present, so I don't know if I can do it in a second.
Yeah, I wasn't there either. Maybe we can. Can we approve these meeting minutes at our next meeting?
You certainly can.
So we move to approve them at the next meeting?
So the motion would be continue the item to the next meeting is usually.
Okay. I'll redo it. I'd like to make a motion to continue the item of approving the September 9th Planning Commission meeting to our next meeting.
Is there a second?
This is for your second, too.
Sounds like we're gonna go forward and do that. Okay. That being said, now we'll move on to our one agenda item today, which is about the proposed amendments to the hotel and motel performance standards in the North Bend Municipal Code 1810-050, Section 216, 2.16. First, we'll have staff tell us about the amendments. Next, we'll have the public will have an opportunity to comment on it. And then lastly, the commissioners will discuss it and decide whether or not to make a recommendation. So Mike McCarty, you are first up.
Thank you, Commissioner Torgerson. So yeah, I'm Mike McCarty. I'm a senior planner with the city of North Bend. And I do want to thank the members of the public joining us for tonight's meeting, sacrificing one of our probably last beautiful evenings of the summer. So what I'm presenting on is proposed municipal code amendments to to the North Bend Planning Commission. And just to clarify, the Planning Commission is a volunteer advisory body to the city council. They provide recommendations on updates to the city's comprehensive plan and development regulations. So as an advisory body, they don't make land use decisions themselves. They only provide recommendations to the council on amendments. And the city council then votes on whether or not to adopt those amendments. So the Planning Commission tonight is considering amendments to the city's hotel and motel performance standards. That's in North Bend Municipal Code 1810-050, Section 2.16. And this is a code section that provides specific requirements concerning the design and construction of hotels within the city. So I'll provide an introduction to what those amendments are, why they're proposed. And then the planning commission can turn it back to the public to hear your comments in the public hearing. After that hearing, they will deliberate and they can choose to then make their recommendation to council. So in coming to their recommendation, the Planning Commission considers the input that the public provides, but they also consider the consistency of the amendments with the policies of the city's comprehensive plan and our development regulations. And those form the basis of development review within the city. So the reason that these proposed code amendments are before the planning commission is that a developer representing Wyndham Hotels has approached the city wishing to construct a hotel at the North Bend Premium Outlets where the Vanity Fair building is currently located. And the proponent would develop a 121-room dual-brand hotel under Wyndham's sub-brands of La Quinta and Hawthorne Suites. The property is located in the city's commercial or interchange commercial zone. And their proposal, which represents a typical hotel on today's market, would not meet the 35-foot height limit that currently applies within the interchange commercial zone, as well as some of the city's performance standards for hotels. So I'm gonna show you some images of the proposal to give you context, but I also want to caution both the planning commission and the members of the public that this hearing and the matter that the planning commission is deliberating tonight is not about a specific hotel proposal. The hearing is about changing the performance standards to enable a hotel to occur. There's a key difference there. So let me open up my screen here to share. Okay, hold on just a second, I'm not seeing it. With a challenge to do this all on one small screen. Okay. All right, so now you should be able to see the planning commission packet. And I'm jumping down to the end of the packet. And there's like, it's all zoomed way in for some reason. All right, now I have to find the zoom button to zoom out a little bit. All right, that is zoomed out to the furthest out extent, and for some reason, sorry, it's still zoomed in. So I'm gonna just try to go down to the bottom page and see if you can see the images. I don't know what you can see on your screen. Does it look like it's really far zoomed in?
Yeah, it looks like we can only see.
I apologize for that, folks. I'm zoomed out. It says all the way, and it's still, for some reason, really zoomed in.
So Mike, if you hover, if you hover towards the bottom of the screen there, you might have to click into the PDF. There you go.
Oh, there. Yep, that's a different zoom button, but that's yeah, it's still, that's, oh, there we go. Yay.
Yeah. Or even holding control, holding control and using the scroll wheel will help, too.
Okay. Okay, so now it's at a scale that you can see. So this is the conceptual proposal, and again, this is not the subject of tonight's meeting. This is a conceptual of what might be submitted for application should the city's development regulation amendments be adopted by the city council. So again, this is a La Quinta and Hawthorne dual-brand hotel. This would be where the Vanity Fair outlet currently sits within the outlet mall property. And shows you what's proposed. This is a five-story building. It would contain four floors of rooms, and then the fifth floor up here would contain a bar with an outdoor patio area and additional meeting rooms. From Bendigo Boulevard, which I think is one of the key issues of concern here, this is what the proposal would look like. It would sit behind a row of mature trees, which would remain within the right-of-way. And the iconic view of the face of Mount Si, which you can see straight ahead there, is not within the view shed from Bendigo Boulevard. So that's a key reason that the hotel performance standards are proposed as they are in that the additional height that's being proposed does not interfere with that view of Mount Si. So let me stop sharing there, and I will go continue with the presentation. So if the city council approves the amendments to the performance standards, Wyndham again would submit applications for a hotel proposal. But in that proposal would be subject to the full development review process and applicable regulations in effect. It would also be noticed at that time to the public who would have an opportunity to provide comment on the proposal. So city staff do support the proposed amendments and recommend approval pending consideration of the public comment that will be received tonight, recognizing that a new hotel would provide numerous benefits to the city. Though a hotel would provide a much-needed service to visitors to North Bend. As you're aware, we only have a few budget-related hotels within the city, which probably don't meet the expectations of many travelers or guests. For those guests right now, just bypass North Bend and stay in other nearby cities. A hotel would bring opportunities for lodging, for activities like sports leagues, tournaments, festivals, and events, as well as just space for our in-laws when they come to visit. Hotel would bring significant secondary benefits in terms of patronage to North Bend businesses, or restaurants, or downtown businesses, et cetera. But again, currently, the city's height limit for hotels, except within the mixed-use interchange mixed-use zone, is 35 feet. Currently, it's 55 feet within the interchange mixed-use zone. 35 feet within the interchange commercial zone, which is proposed for revision, is not a viable height for a middle-of-the-market hotel in today's real estate world. But I want to clarify that while there are hotels out there that could be developed under 35 feet, most of those are older hotels developed in a different era, under different real estate contexts. 35 feet might be possible for small boutique hotels like the Salish Lodge, but those have room rates that can support fewer rooms in a smaller, shorter building. But most of us can't afford to stay in places like that very often. And so there's a need to accommodate the middle of the market, which we found that the city's regulations currently don't, or currently limit. So to specifically describe the amendments, the primary amendment is a proposed increase to the allowed height for one potential hotel within the interchange commercial zone at exit 31, and one potential hotel within the interchange commercial zone at exit 34. Both of those could be up to 65 feet with an additional 10 feet allowed for rooftop architectural features. And those could consist of no more than 35% of the rooftop area. So this allowance is also subject to the incorporation of amenities such as a restaurant bar that's open to the general public, public parking, increased outdoor space, plaza area, additional landscaping, and/or a public park. The amendments also provide an allowance for administrative adjustments to the city's design standards. And that's in recognition that some of our existing design standards were developed primarily thinking about commercial and office and retail buildings. And hotels are of a little bit of a different context, and so the deviation process is necessary to accommodate for those different building characteristics that a hotel brings. The amendments also propose to eliminate an existing requirement to provide balconies for a minimum of 40% of the guest rooms above the ground floor. And that just recognizes that balconies are not necessarily a suitable feature in North Bend's weather context. Most of the year, it's kind of rainy and windy here. The amendments also propose to eliminate nine-foot ceiling height requirements inside the hotel. And they update the city or the sign standards applicable to hotels, recognizing that signs are located on multiple sides of the building, which I think the prior standards didn't consider. The amendments also propose a 30-day maximum stay for hotel guests. So these amendments are consistent with several policies within the city's comprehensive plan. Those policies call for supporting the development of commercial services at exits 31 and 34, which provide services to local residents, attract visitors, and provide tourism-related services. The hotel meets that exactly. It's at exits 31 and 34 for services related to tourism. Likewise, the proposal is consistent with the stated purpose of the interchange commercial zone in our zoning regulations in North Bend Municipal Code 1810-020. And that stated purpose is to accommodate businesses that typically serve passerby travelers and tourists, while also supplying goods for upper-valley residents typical of larger-scale commercial developments. So the city recognizes that there's potential concerns about the impacts of increased height on views. And so we provided analysis of that relative to the standards and to the staff recommendation. So that kind of fits into two categories, potential views from residential areas and views of the iconic view of the rock face of Mount Si at the gateway entrance to the sea. Regarding views from residential areas, the interchange commercial zone, where the proposed increase in height would be allowed, is not located to any residential areas. So let me share my screen to show you where this is proposed specifically. So if you can see my zoning map now, this is the city zoning map, and to give you some bearing, this is exit 31. We'll look at exit 34 after this. And the purple area is the interchange commercial zone where this height increase would be allowed. So that's across I-90 and separated by other roads and other properties from the closest residential area of Forester Woods across the way. Other areas of single-family residential are behind the Safeway Shopping Center and then some of our downtown area. But as you can see, the purple does not touch any of those areas. So there's actually considerable separation. So the blue, for example, is the shopping center. So these homes would not see a potential hotel from there. Let me move over to exit 34. So likewise, purple is the same interchange commercial zone where an increase in height for one hotel at this exit would be allowed. And you can see the purple is quite isolated from the areas of residential zoning, which are shown in yellow. It's separated by quite a distance. The very closest point to a single-family residential use, which is actually here in the light industrial employment park two zone, this is a distance of 600 feet at the very closest point. Whitt River being the neighborhood over here is approximately 800 to 900 feet away. This property owned by Peget Western is subject to future light industrial development, which would separate the proposed hotel from residential areas. So these two areas interchange commercial are really the most appropriate areas for hotels within the city. They're off the interstate. They're isolated from residential areas, and they're within other commercial services. So the city staff feel that this is the most appropriate place to encourage a hotel. And the amendments, again, are specifically proposed to enable a hotel to occur, whereas our current height limit and sort of performance standards may preclude a development of a hotel from now. So in summary, the planning commission is not deliberating on a specific hotel proposal, but on the amendments to the city's development regulations that would pertain to the development of any hotel proposal within the city, and specifically a height increase allowance just within the interchange commercial zone. The public's input is really important on this. Planning commission will want to hear that from you in considering and deliberating and making their recommendation to the city council. I do want to request, though, that the comments are provided in a respectful manner. Just recognize that these planning commissioners are volunteers. They're your neighbors. They're North Bend residents, and they care deeply about our community, as does the staff. So let me turn it back to the planning commission, and they can open the hearing and take your comments.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. At this time, we're gonna consider comments from the public regarding the proposed amendments that Mike just talked about. As a reminder, there's not gonna be any dialogue between commissioners and the public, but the commissioners are listening and considering your comments. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand or make a comment in the chat room there. To keep the meeting orderly and efficient, I will call on you. Please state your name and address for the record before sharing your comments, and you will have three minutes. Let's see, we have, looks like.
Beth Burrows in the chat has requested making comments. Oh, I see a lot of hands now, too.
Oh, yeah, I'm starting to see hands, too. All right. Well, we'll first start with Beth. Beth, what is your address?
Hi, yes, I'm Beth Burrows. My address is 312 Northeast 6th Street in North Bend.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to come out in favor of the proposed changes. I know hotels need to fit in a certain number of rooms in order to be profitable. And I've lived in the valley since 1989, and I've seen a lot of changes, and I think that everyone on the commission is being very thoughtful and very careful with the decisions that they're making. And I think they're doing a very good job, and I would like to support the hotel amendments. I think it's important for us to have affordable, decent places that we can send our family, that we can have tournaments, that we can encourage those longer stays here in North Bend. And also, I think it's important for when the pass closes to have affordable choices for people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, how about Chelsea Stevens?
Hi, thank you. I am Chelsea Stevens. I'm one of the owners of the proposed Wyndham project. My address, 5591 State Highway 28 East, Soap Lake, Washington. We are the owners of the proposed location for the new new possible site. I wanted to voice a comment in support of the changes that have been proposed. Not surprisingly, I suppose. Specifically, I wanted to talk a little bit about the revisions as proposed as they relate to the height requirement. That seems to be kind of the most significant piece of this. Especially after hearing the earlier comments from the public before this topic was brought to the floor, I wanted to point out that it is because of a possible height requirement, or sorry, a change to the height requirements, that we would actually be able to provide a new view of Mount Si that's not currently available to the public. So as you could see from the photo that was shared, we are right, or we would be right, located right behind a line of trees that would block the view from that spot of the mountain. Even if you stood on the roof of the outlet malls right now, you wouldn't have a nice view. But with an allowance to build to the height we would like to see in that location, and with the addition of that rooftop lounge, we'd be providing a view of the mountain that's not currently available, and it would be available to the public, to the community to enjoy. So in our opinion, we would be adding to, you know, the enjoyment of the natural beauty of the community of North Bend. And so I just think it's important for the commission to consider that there are significant positives related to allowing a higher building that many folks maybe don't think of immediately when they hear that the there is this proposal for a change in the height allowance. The other thing I wanted to address is that even with these performance standard revisions as they are proposed, we have certainly witnessed firsthand that they still require a large amount of changes for a developer to comply with kind of the aesthetic and the atmosphere that the folks of North Bend want to see. The original prototype that Wyndham would plunk down in a town is very different from the prototype that we are now working with, and that is because there are so many requirements that the city staff, in our opinion, has taken into account that are important to the community and to the folks that, you know, would have to see this hotel on a regular basis. And so although we realize that change to the standards means that things will be different, I think that they have been very careful to severely limit and narrowly focus what those changes will be, but in.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We're running out of time, so if you can summarize and close up.
I just wanted to say that I think that the staff has been very specific and careful with what changes they have recommended in order to allow any hotel really at this modern time to come into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Hey, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Tao. Can I just jump in and ask a process question?
Certainly.
I thought I heard Mike say that we're considering essentially zoning amendments as they would pertain to hotels in these two zone locations, but that we weren't considering any specific project. And yet, the visual exhibits kind of suggest a specific branded hotel, and the testimony we just heard also seemed to suggest that there is a specific branded hotel project in mind, and I just want to clarify which is it, because it seems that if we're trying to consider the policy aspect of zoning changes, that when we start talking about Wyndham does this and Wyndham does that, and this is what Wyndham is gonna look like and what they're going to do, we seem like we've crossed a line into a specific project being proposed by an individual proponent. And if that's okay, then that's okay. It just seems a little contradictory to what I thought we heard at the outset of the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Tao. If you'd like me to address that, that is correct. You are, we are just listening regarding the performance standards within our zoning code regulation. We felt that it was important to include the images so that you could, it was the only image we had to show you what that height would look like. And we don't prevent any public comment, whether they want to address a specific future proposal or something that was included, but you are correct. We are specifically looking at the performance standards and not the hotel project itself.
Thank you.
Okay. Lucas, would you like to speak? Lucas, would you like to speak? Can you give us your full name and address?
Yes, thank you. My name is Lucas Haynes. My address is 43525 Southeast 76th Street, Snoqualmie, Washington. I'm here to speak on behalf of two different entities. First, as the president of the North Bend Downtown Foundation, I'm here to advocate for healthy tourism and offering services to folks visiting North Bend and creating a vibrant and healthy downtown ecosystem and the infrastructure required to support that. While we are using examples of the Wyndham project to talk about this, I do want to say that as the Downtown North Bend Downtown Foundation, we do support these zoning changes regardless of the project used to show examples of the changes. Secondly, I would like to speak on behalf of, as a business owner in the North Bend Downtown corridor, as the owner of Volition Brewing Company and saying that we've seen many times where visitors to downtown would be more inclined to participate in our goods and services at a higher volume if they were offered an accommodation more in line with their expectations as hotels and motels will operate today. And anything that we can do to minimize the impact to our view and our environment, but still promote and advocate and create an area for these types of businesses to arrive and thrive is a good win for everybody, both citizens and businesses alike.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like we have Kevin Brewster. Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, Kevin Brewster, 428 Orchard Avenue Northeast here in North Bend. Yeah, I'd like to just say that, you know, I think the sightlines, there are many sightlines in town, not just of Mount Si. A rattlesnake is is a nice mountain to look at as well as, you know, Mount Washington further down the valley. And I think you can see these places from many different locations along Snoqualmie Valley Trail and and throughout town. And I think it's important to keep tall buildings under control because it's not just the only view to Mount Si. There are many views throughout town. Additionally, sightlines are not just from the closest building. These hotels might be seen from anywhere you are in town and well, there you can't undo what what gets done. I think that, you know, a hotel should be able to make do, you know, maybe with a little bit taller than 35 feet, but certainly not over four stories and no need for superfluous architecture or even a rooftop bar. So I would suggest that we try to get very close to the current height restrictions and that there'd still be plenty of opportunity for a hotel to make money and be successful in town and provide service. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? I see Karen Simpson raising her hand. Go ahead, Karen, you give us your name, your full name and your address. Oh, you need to unmute yourself first. Karen, if you could unmute yourself, then we could hear you.
There we go. All right, let's see if we can hear me now.
We can.
Oh, there we go. I'm, I, every day I'm better at this. I'm getting teased by Luke and Karen mercifully about my, my, or my Zoom techniques. So my address is 15910 Uplands Way Southeast, North Bend, Washington 98045. I sell real estate in the valley. I have a lot of clients that are Airbnb clients. I also have a lot of clients that are first time home buyer clients. I have a lot of people who need affordable rent in the valley. And I want to say that I wholeheartedly support the hotel initiative coming in because I think it's going to handle some other things that economically. The Airbnb industry has gobbled up a lot of rentals in the valley that we need as affordable rentals. This, this will help that piece of it as well as I think also promoting more tourism in the valley and help the downtown merchants. So I just look at the prongs from economic development. I think it matches exactly what North Bend, the city wants to be known as. And it potentially those restrict, you know, having, having a economic, maybe a little bit of an economic downturn for Airbnb, even those folks are my clients, they'll pop into the rental market. They will pull back and become long-term rental if they don't, if they're not successful as Airbnb. So I'm not really worried about it in terms of that. And I think it just once, once again, it helps grow the the local economy. So I'm in favor. Thank you very much.
We also have Cherie Cooper in the chat.
Yeah, I see that, Sherry.
Okay, perfect.
I had unmuted myself. So anyways, Sherry Cooper, would you like to speak? Could you give us your full name and your address for the record? Sherry Cooper, are you there?
You might have.
My computer did not want to unmute me. I apologize.
No worries.
Cherie Cooper, first name spelled C H E R I E. Address 301 North Tacoma Avenue, Tacoma. Property owner on North Bend Way, have been for 15 years. I am in support, so I'm in favor of the amendments. We're off exit 32, so because of the acreage, we have, we've heard for some time of there being interest to bring a hotel into the city of North Bend. Some interest in our property, but to go to where Mike showed us exit 31 and exit 34 as being perceived as best locations, I think that's great. I'm aware of Wyndham's interest and I think Marriott as well. I think it's only a matter of time that, I mean, as I understand these amendments, it needs to be what brings us into 2021 and thereafter. And I see all the value of not only having, I mean, in winter months, we know that sometimes the pass is closed and there's people that are looking for a place to stay. So I see that value when I hear meeting rooms. I know we've been approached of people wanting to have meeting areas for their upstart business and things of that nature. So I'm not finding a negative. Therefore, for the planning commissioners to hear of another person in support, I support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Michael DeMarito. Could you state your full name and address, please?
Yeah, a nice presentation, a nice pronunciation. So I, I'm Michael DeMarito. I'm at 2280 East Osso Lido Trail in Oral Valley, Arizona. So I am one of the hotel architects that's looking at a project here in North Bend, which we've already discussed. A couple of things I wanted to mention that were brought up. The, you know, the hotel brands have all kind of figured out what makes their projects, you know, financially viable. And whether it's Wyndham, Hilton or Marriott, they, they all have it figured out. Typically, we're seeing 100 room minimum, typically 100 to 200 guest rooms is really about the limit of what they can do. So it, it, it pretty quickly forces into a four-story building at the minimum. The only thing I'll say about this particular project that we're looking at at the, at the outlet mall is that we've looked fairly closely at North Bend's current codes, talking with staff, talking with city council and figured out that, you know, the Wyndham prototype did not really perfectly fit into the North Bend, you know, environment. So we, we've already made some drastic changes to that, to that design, including, you know, roof styles, all the exterior cladding materials and, and of course the height. So we've been working hard to try and come to a point where there's a, a reasonable kind of compromise to to get a hotel to fit into the city, but to still be, you know, something that's friendly to the environment and to the, to the community. So that's our goal. We're, we're really in support of the amendment changes. We think that's a, I, of all the municipalities I've worked in, I, I think that North Bend has been right at the top in their professionalism and trying to do this the right way and not really step on anyone's toes. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Luke Talbot. Could you give us your full, your full name and address, please?
Sure, Susan. It's Luke Talbot, 1025 Riverside Drive, Southeast North Bend. I am sitting in two different spaces. I'm a resident of North Bend and have been for five or six years and also run Compass Outdoor Adventures and work with tourism traffic all the time. Currently, the majority of our, our clients come into the town and they go straight to the Salish. Which farms quite a few events into the valley. However, it's pretty price sensitive, right? So there, there's lots of folks that can't hit that price point that want to experience the outdoors and what we have to offer here. And they're coming regardless of whether we make money off of them. So they're, they're coming into town and they're, they're running through town and they're, they're utilizing all of our trails and everything else. For years, we've talked with the Salish about increasing their room nights and figuring out how to keep people in the valley for more than, you know, one day or more than, if if you go to the falls, more than seven minutes, right? So I think that if we can build a situation that promotes healthy tourism in the valley for both groups and individuals, I think it's a win-win for everybody. Now, will that affect some people's vision and sightlines and everything else? Of course it will. It always will. But that, I think that that is going to be the next step of growth that we need to look forward to in order to figure out how do we just manage all these folks coming into the valley anyway? So I'm totally behind amending the, the height restrictions and and bringing in a few motels or a few hotels into the valley. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else?
I see neither one, anyone else in the chat are raising their hands.
Okay.
Did I finish the whole thing? That was great. What perfect timing. Wow, awesome. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
You lucked out. All right, well, at this time, it's time for the commissioners to discuss the amendments and if they have any clarifications they need to talk to the city, we can do that.
Thanks, Stuart Targerson. Can you officially note that you're closing the public hearing and note the time?
Officially note that we're closing the public hearing at 7:43 PM.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Um, so we're going to discuss that and then, and then the commissioners will make a recommendation accordingly. So I open it up to the commissioners. Do you guys have any thoughts? James?
Yeah, I can, I can start. Yeah, so I'm, I'm for the, the change. I think that the hotel is, is quite needed in town and this does match, in my opinion, what's been missing for North Bend for quite a while. I'm a big fan of the idea of even, short of any type of or specific hotel, this type of lodging is needed. The only kind of comment I kind of saw from the, the code that I think does kind of speak to some of the concern here that Gary spoke to is, let me see if I can find the line again real quick. The, what is it, Performance Standard 216 Hotel Motel Line D, the new Line D, the allowance of the hotels to 65 feet in height shall be limited to two hotels. I think that does kind of speak to what Gary said and I, I agree with him in the sense that if we're going to change code like this, I would rather see something added to that line that says in an effort to minimize or to minimize the amount of hotels that can come in, it's limited to. The way that reads there, it sounds like you're saying we have two that we want to do and these are the two, the only ones we're going to allow to do this change. That's a little too specific for my liking when you talk about a code change like this. So you could still say what you're saying there in, in that line. I'd like to see a line that says why it's only those two. Does that make sense, Mike?
Yeah, so just as a suggested language to the beginning of provision D, in an effort to limit the visual impacts of multiple taller buildings, and then the standard would read it.
I like it.
Heather?
I'm sorry, I'm not done, quite done. I did, I just another, it's a, not a change or anything like that, but I do want to commend you guys for making this change. I, we've been, we have been, as noted, kind of railing against the DA mentality. And I like that you've come to, to us with a code change instead. That, that's about it. That's props free to you guys for that.
Heather, did you want to?
Yeah, I had some similar comments. I also wanted to commend you for not bringing another development agreement, but for for allowing us to consider amending the regulations and addressing the issue there. And then I had a similar question, which I think and that it was about the overall cumulative impact. If, if we make North Bend really hotel-friendly, we get a lot of permit applications for hotels. But then I think that that did get addressed in the Performance Standards D, which James brought up. And then in the future, would it, would this go through a similar local amendment process if, say, someone, if if we wanted to make a change from two hotels to like three or four, like would it be? What would that process be if someone in the future wanted to change the allowable limit of hotels?
So the city can always consider code amendments. It would still need to go through the very same public process that these amendments would go through.
Or would still allow for a DA that that code is still there, so.
Now, but they could also build to the smaller, the lower height, as many as they wanted to. Specifically this height, they could only be able to build these two, right?
That's correct.
And just to clarify, the interchange mixed-use zone, which is not the subject of the amendments, does already allow a 55-foot tall hotel.
Okay.
Any more questions, Heather?
I know, I think the addition that, that we had just added is, is good.
Okay, sounds good. How about you, Olivia?
I had a question. Am I muted? No, okay. I had a question. So page 13, the first paragraph, the red, the red line, it says additionally administrative amendments may be used to modify or reduce the required design standards where the design guidelines are, in the opinion of the director, not intended for hotels. My first question is, is the, who's the director? Like who holds that position?
That's me.
Oh, hi. Okay, and my second question is what does, can you just like, explain to me what that sentence means? I don't not understand what I'm reading.
No, basically, as Mike mentioned earlier, our design standards were actually designed for retail office and other type uses. So some, one of the examples of a design standard have to do with certain types of windows and it doesn't make sense when you're doing individual hotel rooms and some other, you know, there's, there was things regarding eaves that don't always make sense. If there's not eve, some, some areas have flat roofs and things like that. So there, there's a, there's things that clearly, you know, don't make sense for a hotel that's in, that's in our design standards because a hotel is kind of a unique building compared to other types of retail and commercial buildings.
A very specific example. A very specific example of that is our design standards call for buildings to be built up to the street front, which is excellent when you're developing in a downtown context with storefront type uses. If that were to be done with the hotel proposal as proposed, you would probably wind up losing all of those trees. If that were to be done with the hotel proposal as proposed, you would probably wind up losing all of those trees along Bendigo Boulevard because they'd be too close to the building. So that's an important visual. Um, we want to protect those trees as a part of the overall view corridor in that gateway image coming into North Bend, looking at Mount Si.
I agree. Uh, okay, so basically, this sentence is saying that not every little design change has to go through this public process and the commission and city council, like Rebecca, you can just decide, yes, you can have these windows.
So so yes, basically, there was, we have a design guideline. And so it's not these standards, these standards they have to meet. We have a set of design guideline, a separate book that requires all of our commercial and industrial buildings to go off of. And it's really only split into two categories, commercial and industrial. Well, a hotel is a little bit different than just a commercial building. Um, and so there's already an administrative process within the code. Um, but some of our standards in this code pretty much prevented hotels from using the administrative standard um the way these performance standards were written before. So we're trying to make it clear that we can use the performance standards and the administrative amendment and that my scope within that administrative um amendments is limited to items that, you know, don't make sense. Um, and not just a full administrative amendment for anything.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Hey, Gary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so I have a few things, uh, questions and some comments. Uh, first, I I'd like to propose we take a different approach to li- limiting or prescribing a certain number of sixty-five-foot hotels. Uh, because if I understood the previous conversation, that's really what the uh the amendment is is getting to. It's limiting the number of sixty-five-foot hotels. It doesn't limit or place a limit on or place a number on the quantity of potential smaller hotels. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it you know, if we were looking at residential zones, for example, we wouldn't say you're limited to five houses or three stories. We would, we would benchmark those to something. It would be uh homes per acre or dwelling units or something like that. So if the the purpose of raising the building height to sixty-five feet is to allow for more units to make the projects, the hotels, uh, more economically viable. Couldn't we, in the zoning language, place the limit rather on the number of hotels? Because to me, that's now picking winners and losers. That that's first hotel to uh to make a proposal wins the lottery. As opposed to what's the cap on the uh number of units of a particular hotel? I mean, the net effect is the same thing, but it isn't saying we'll allow one here and one there. It's allow, it's saying that within the footprint of this zone, no hotel can exceed a a maximum density or capacity, if you will, which aligns with the building height. Because I it it just doesn't feel comfortable to me to make a change to the performance standards in a zone and and then prescribe a number that you will allow within that zone. Yeah, that's what a development agreement is for.
So can you provide me what a draft language of what you're thinking? Because I'm I can't.
Well, uh, well, I could probably submit that after the meeting for consideration next time. Uh, you know, I and there's an architect on the line and and maybe the architect might have some ideas on, you know, how to to craft it that way. Uh, it it is, that's really what we're trying to, we're not necessarily trying to limit the number of hotels as opposed to limit the impact of increasing the building heights, increasing the density of this zone in these locations. Does that make sense? You know, kind of what I'm getting, I mean, it's a it's trying to address the same issue without being so prescriptive on the number of hotels, because I I it it feels like there's some lack of transparency here. You know, on one hand, we are talking about a general change to the zoning performance standards. At the same time, all we're talking about is Wyndham. That seems extremely specific. It it feels like there is a project, there's a proponent, there's a potential proposal. And so what we're doing is we're trying to craft amendments to the zone to accommodate this specific project, which I I just, I think that's that's not the right policy process. If we prescribe the the density that we want, you know, constraint that we want to to follow or what the maximum density that one or two sixty-five-foot high hotels would achieve and and limit it that way. It it feels like the zoning change is broader than a specific proponent. Because this particular project that's being discussed has been discussed. If, for whatever reason, like across the street, it falls through, there may be another proponent who has a different design configuration in mind. And they might want, they might need sixty-seven feet as opposed to sixty-five, you know, I I don't know. This just seems like it's trying to define the amendment to fit the project as opposed to define the amendment to facilitate any project that meets these characteristics.
If if I may, I just, I think based on the testimony from the architect before was that this is kind of market-based as well. That he kind of made that comment about the that kind of needs to be this size to be profitable in this in that realm. Now, not to say that you couldn't go much wider and probably make that that number up. And maintain and still maintain that lower height, but that's a lot more land, obviously.
The reality of it also for exit thirty-one, at least, is that the only viable place for a hotel would be the outlet mall. The other properties within the interchange commercial zone are just too small by themselves. So it's like the gas station and the Mexican restaurant. Um, those are not big enough on their own to support a hotel proposal.
So why would we even need to say you can only have one here? I mean, if if the the real estate itself would not accommodate more than one, why do we need to say only one? What what is it that we're missing that somehow two could sneak in there if we didn't have that language that limited it to one?
It may also be the it may still be the case at exit thirty-four that you could get multiple hotels.
Or you could have multiple hotels at the outlet mall and reduce the amount of outlet mall if if you allowed more than one.
And and so what's the the downside to that? Uh, the view corridor is the same, right? Are we trying to act a particular proponent and?
No, I I think a comparative example here would be cottages. So the planning commission recommended to the council a limit on the number of cottage developments that could be developed within the um low-density residential zone. So there's a requirement that if there's a cottage development in the LDR zone, you can't do another cottage development within five hundred, I believe it's five hundred feet of that cottage development. And that's to limit the impacts to the character of the neighborhood. You don't want a LDR zone, low-density residential to convert to essentially a cottage zone. So there's that that a similar limit on the number and in intensity of that type of use.
Okay, I kind of I kind of went down that same path as as what you're looking at when I was reading through it. And again, it's that spurred my comment, my initial comment. I it's the reason I came back to what my initial comment is, I can't think of a good way to get around to where you're where I think you're going here. Uh, I mean, maybe with more time, but the the idea being one, right, you'd want to limit it so you don't have, if somebody bought out the outlet mall, you wouldn't have four hotels all that size or just slightly under that size to make to make worth it. I I have a hard time coming with that language. I just don't think that's what the what the public would want in that area.
But we don't know. We're we're not, we're not asking them that question.
If you guys want to make us up a different recommendation, we are open to a different recommendation. It was worded this way after discussion from work-study at council and um what we've heard over other projects like, you know, when we originally brought the medium-density residential, they'd rather see a trial in the area before changing the code to outright allow.
Yeah, well, that's the argument.
And so that's where we're.
The uh every time we see a development agreement, that's the argument. We just want to do a pilot. We just want to see how this potential idea.
It's what I hear too. I know.
And and, you know, a number of us have expressed concern on that process and that mindset. And if council has already directed that there's going to be no more than one at exit thirty-one and no more than one at exit thirty-four, then, you know, let's just, let's just say that.
Well, it's not, it's not directed. It's it's part of the discussion of concerns of too many. And so that's what staff's recommendation to bring to planning commission, who makes that recommendation after hearing from the public. So like I said, we are open to an alternate motion than what we propose or alternate code um from from the planning commission. Absolutely.
Okay, um, it's so another question then, um, because for the exit thirty-one, you had the kind of the superimposed view of the hotel with the trees. Does does our code, as it relates to Bendigo Boulevard or anywhere we where we have trees that would kind of block the the structure from view? Does our code protect a hundred percent of those trees along those streets? Because we have seen other developments in other locations where trees have been removed. Uh, some by accident, others uh following the what the code allows the development to to do. And it has changed what the the end view.
Yeah, those trees are are very important. And what's different in this case is those trees are in the city's control. So those are within the right-of-way of the street. And so that's where the city has the authority to say you got to preserve those. So we're actually requiring the developer through one of the provisions in our design standards, which calls for retaining existing mature trees and relocating sidewalks where necessary to relocate or to to preserve those trees. But they're actually shifting the sidewalk onto the the hotel site rather than within the right-of-way corridor, which would then require removal of the trees.
Was that in the?
That's already in the design standard, so that's not proposed for amendment.
So there's no change to that. So the city has the authority to keep the trees, but does it also have the authority to allow removal of of trees if the developer requested and if he felt like it made sense? I I just don't want to portray a scenario where this is what the view will look like because these trees will remain. And then we get down the road on a development and some of those trees have to come out for whatever development reason. And and the picture ends up being different than the picture that we presented to the public.
That picture again regarding both the hotel and the viewscape are conceptual. So yes, as the development is reviewed, some of those trees right now are sickly and they should come out because they're potential hazards. But then there would be supplemental landscaping where they would be replacing trees. And the intent there is that that um row of trees as a part of the overall gateway into the city would remain.
And and as we can say, you're you're absolutely correct. Any street tree or street within the street right-of-way at any time in the future, being that it's a street tree, is under the control of the city, not necessarily the developer. So you you I, you know, other than having, you know, I don't know what other promises, you know, in this case, we're not, it's not an on-on-site tree. It is a city tree.
Okay. Uh, the last question I had, well, I guess I have two. One, one is only a bit of a tangent, but one of the speakers talked about Airbnbs. Wha- what zone in North Bend or zones are Airbnb's allowed? Are they like specifically called out or is it something else?
Well, the way that we allow Airbnb's right now is via what's called a home occupation business. So if you own the home and you're a resident of the home, you can also rent that home out for occasional guests as an Airbnb home occupation use.
So it's not a a permitted use within a particular zone?
Not as a standalone use, no.
Yeah, got it. Okay. Um, and then the the last question or comment or quasi-bos. Uh, some of the, at least the written testimony that we saw, the written comments that were submitted, uh, a couple of them mentioned specifically water, but I think under the broader category of infrastructure. Again, we're kind of being asked to consider increasing the density of this zone. Um, and I didn't really see anything in the materials that kind of addressed the adequacy of the infrastructure to support that increased density, not a specific project, because we're not considering a specific project. But the ability to consider the increased density in the zone at both of these locations is there? Um, I'm I'm sure you've looked at that through the staff analysis and and maybe conversations with council. But there what didn't appear to be really anything in the packet that kind of addressed the infrastructure capacity, uh, whether it's water, uh, could be traffic, uh, could be sewer septic. You know, we we addressed sewer septic and a couple of other projects that we reviewed in planning commission over the last few months. And and that seemed a little absent here. Is there something that can be inserted into the materials to at least address that in the record when we make a recommendation or make a decision?
I don't believe that needs to be a part of the conversation because future projects are subject to the city's concurrency requirements. So we cannot approve a project unless it's demonstrated that there is available capacity with our wastewater treatment plant, our water, et cetera.
Okay, so that's for that it's pressed.
And yes, and if I can add that this zone, when you did the comprehensive plan and the zoning map and did the environmental associated with it, this fits within the imagined description of the kind of uses that would go in there. So we're not adding a new use. A hotel motel is already allowed. I understand we're allowing it at a taller use. But, you know, it the height is really the majority of of the change. And and it's not a change in zone and it's not a change in allowable uses. Um, so a lot of those are usually addressed at a project-by-project basis at that point.
Okay, yeah, I it it is a more dense use of the zone. We're we're adding additional units as a through extending the building height. So that's why I asked the question on where does the infrastructure to support that increased density get addressed? Is it addressed in the performance standards? Is is it addressed in the amendments to the zone? Or as I think what Mike was describing, that gets addressed in review of a specific project?
Correct.
Okay, okay, those are those are my questions. Thanks.
Did we lose Susan?
I've admitted her back. Oh, she's back in the waiting room again. I admitted her just a minute ago and she must be dropping out. Is there any other commissioner while we're waiting for Susan to come on that would like to speak? Or speak again? Susan, do we got you back?
You are muted.
There we go.
Okay.
Now my computer decided to reboot itself. Very nice. Okay, I'm sorry. I was in the middle of Gary's conversation there. Um, I'm guessing he's done now.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. Um, so, uh, it sounds like now everybody's had a chance to talk about the amendments. Um, do we have a motion? Does anyone present a motion about any sort of recommendations? Any commissioners? Anyone?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Todd. I'm just when when if if we are at a point where a commissioner is going to uh, make a motion to approve these design amendments, um. Yeah, I I'm not going to be able to support that. I I am in support of uh, hotels. I I the the concept here I am in support of. Uh, I I think there are some holes. The one that I'm most concerned about is specifically placing a number limit uh, on the number of hotels. And I'm sure if I had some time, I could propose some language that I think would address what what I think would be a better approach to trying to achieve the same thing. Uh, but that isn't my area of expertise. And so I'm not gonna try and come up with something here on the fly. Um, but that that to me is is a showstopper. I just don't think it's appropriate to prescribe a particular number, especially when the number is one. So that that's gonna be a a concern for me when we get to that point. So just kind of putting that out there in advance.
If we delayed making a motion till the next meeting, um, Gary, would that give you time to to revise um table eighteen ten zero five zero D?
It would at least allow me to propose something that I I I think would feel better to me, um, and still accomplish the same thing, which is creating some kind of a a limit on the density of of hotels in these zones. Uh, I I just, I don't feel like I could do that right here on on the spot. So if the
Yeah.
planning commission and the staff could indulge me till next time, you know, I'll certainly make a proposal. And and might reach out to to staff or other commissioners for, uh, and that might violate meetings rule, but at least staff for some suggestions on how to, uh, in my opinion, better approach that particular constraint that we're trying to to place on it.
Yeah, well, I have similar concerns and I would be more comfortable making a motion if I see some um, the the revisions to that language.
Yeah.
It, yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing what the staff came up with too, if they wanted to come up with a a version of that, knowing what we're talking about.
Is that something that Rebecca, you guys can do is to rephrase?
It's it's gonna require some analysis, because if you're talking about a certain square footage or or something like that, we'd have to make sure that that's it's both fair and realistic.
Yeah, I I'm not, I cannot think of a way to do it that would do rooms or square footage with the limiting the height with still limiting it to not having a possibility of multiple at that height and have bigger rooms or um, more meeting rooms and 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 have more hotels that uh, and if that's what you guys are okay with, then we can definitely look at it that way. Um. And I don't know if you're looking at putting a cap on the number of hotel rooms for each area period. Um, or if you're looking at per building, or if you're looking at um, I I I really cannot even think how we would go about trying to do word it that way. Um. I mean, one thing you can recommend if you're just worried about saying it's one, you know, you could recommend that you allow two in anywhere in the zone. Um, and not specify one per exit. Um, I'm trying to think of, you know, any other way it could be worded. I have no con- concern if you guys wanna continue uh, continue it in order to deliverate. I'm just not sure how I would. I I don't think I've ever seen a code written in such a way that you're asking me to write. And I'm not sure how we would address it like that, because even when we have a density for houses, it's a per unit and the height is still a separate limit. It's not built into that density discussion. Um.
Is there any sort of parameters you can make for like distance between the hotels that are of that certain kind of height?
Absolutely. You can, you can absolutely add a a new performance standard and remove that one that says they need to be five hundred feet away from each other or a thousand feet away from each other. Um, that that's definitely an easy one to to put in.
I get where Gary's coming from, you know, it's it's odd saying specifically just one in this area when you know, should be.
Yeah, it just again, I don't I don't know how to put the height into that. I can, we can put up that hotels are allowed to be at a certain density, so many rooms per square feet, just like we do for multifamily. But even when we have that density, we still have a separate height limitation. So I don't know how to build in that height limitation to that density allowance.
Well, I don't think there it's not either either or. I I I think the height, I I'm not questioning the height.
Okay.
So i- it's I'm questioning the rationale behind the number one. And why not two? Why not four? Why? I mean, if hotels are a good thing, then and they're they're great for for the local economy and jobs and all of that. Uh, y- you could make an argument that, well, having more of them would is better unless we're trying to protect just a single project, which I think you said you're not.
No.
Uh, so if that's the case, when we look at the total area of this IC zone where hotels are allowed, you know, the the question is if one is okay, why is too bad? What or why is four bad? What what is it because of the additional traffic? Is it because of uh, you know, whatever it may be, uh, is there a competitive aspect of it? Uh, you know, I I don't know. It's just that part of it isn't really isn't really addressed. And so that's why I was proposing, well, okay, sixty five feet is fine. I'm I'm not necessarily saying eliminate the sixty five feet. I that probably has to be in there. But the sixty five feet, there was a reason for that. And and I thought we heard that the reason is that gives the a project, the minimum amount of rooms to be economically viable. But it's looking at a per single hotel in isolation as opposed to look the whole zone. And what are we trying to achieve with the zone?
So if you're if you're concerned about fairness, what what we could do is allow for two hotels at exit thirty one and one hotel at exit thirty four. That would be allowed within the IC zone up to sixty.
Or if you're saying you just want free market, you're welcome to just remove that limit and and not put the limit that there's at that height. That could be your recommendation to council.
Because if there was a if if there was a hotel there at sixty five feet and and then they sold the outlet mall and somebody came in and wanted to build another sixty five foot hotel, wouldn't staff have a number of different um, hurdles that a development would have to clear or or put another way, a number of different uh, potential constraints on developing another sixty five foot hotel, whether they be traffic or infrastructure or something else. I mean, wouldn't you have, wouldn't staff have the ability to look at a proposed second hotel or third hotel and say, I'm sorry, the real estate just isn't there? The infrastructure just isn't there or won't be there. And so we can't approve this project.
We don't have the discretion to say no to something that meets the standards. So if it can show that it it meets our concurrency requirements for traffic and sewer and water, etc. And um, it's met the design standards and so forth. It has to be approved.
And and it could require a mitigation as in they have to do something to widen the road or do something to traffic to meet it, but but it's you don't, it's not a no. It's can you make it work? And we can't say no from a a a standard of marketability. That's a, you know, we don't have, we don't have the ability to say our market can only hold five hundred rooms and you're now over five hundred in terms of, unless that's in the code that says we allow five hundred rooms citywide. But we don't have, we don't get into the marketability of it. We look at like, uh, Mike said, the standards and whether they can do improvements to our infrastructure in order to meet our standards. If they do, then we have to approve them if it's a permitted use.
But you could take the, so the IC zone, one hotel, right now, what you're proposing is that one hotel at sixty five feet could be built, but any number of hotels at thirty five feet or fifty five feet could also be built, right?
That's correct, just as any other permitted use in that zone. Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Well, let me let me be clear. You could have one hotel at sixty five in the ICU zone. But then everything underneath that, everything else would have to be under thirty five under these, right? Because fifty five is just the IMU one, right?
Correct. Yeah, you could have a fifty five in the IMU. You could have it one sixty five in the IC and then thirty five throughout the rest of the the zones that allow hotels.
Right. So you're only allowing it under the this, the way it's written now, you'd be allowing one tall hotel in the IC. Any other taller ones at the fifty five would be in the other zone.
A- and we allow.
That's already, that's already allowed.
Yeah, and we allow certain hotels in the, you know, the DC zone, some areas allow forty five. So there there are other areas that are above thirty five, but the IC is thirty five.
But the IC, it would, right now, you're proposing one sixty five footer, but again, any, no limit to the number of thirty five foot hotels within that zone.
Correct.
Right? But that seems like we're we're limiting the economic potential of the zone by doing that. And so again, that's kind of why I'm struggling with why just one if you know, would the community be more adversely impacted by one more sixty five foot hotel or by four thirty five foot hotels? It it I don't know. I don't have an answer to that. We haven't asked that question. Um, or even looked at that potential scenario to say with setbacks and parking requirements and all of that, what would that footprint even accommodate from uh, a maximum hotel saturation?
Well, again, we don't get into involved involved in the maximum saturation. That's market conditions and the business is coming. You you're right. We haven't had anyone come and complain to us that we should remove a permitted hotel use from the zone. And at this current time, it could be, we could have a you can't literally put a hundred, but you could put ten hotels in that zone now at the thirty five feet. Um, but what we've learned is we're not getting hotels coming um, at the thirty five feet. And you know, if you're saying you you're don't, if if the commission in general doesn't have a problem with the height, then you know, then it sounds like your recommendation might be to remove that entire sentence. Um, and and make a recommendation to council that you don't limit the number of hotels at sixty five feet. You know, the other option is if you feel that fifty five feet is okay in IMU, you can add in the one section that says commercial bu- building height of the IMU may be increased to fifty five. You can say IMU or um, or IC zone. Um, if we want one sixty five and some fifty fives, you know, if you think that's that's what the market, you know, what you guys think the market will hold or what the community might want. So you know, I I just don't know how to put it in a range of what you were talking about of like density. Um, if there's no concern with the height, then we remove that limit, you you know, that recommendation to remove that limit.
I just think the rationale for limiting it to one, I I don't see it. Uh, there there isn't any facts and data that says one is the right number because of these factors, which is why I was concerned about just picking one. If there is a reason for picking one, let's figure out what is the reason that we want to limit it to one and make sure the performance standards address the reason for the limit, not just the limit itself.
You could provide a a motion to the commissioners and see where it goes.
Well, that's what we were talking about earlier. I I don't feel like I can do that on the spot. If we're willing to defer final action on this to the next meeting, then then there's a little time to to try and craft some language that might get to that concern.
Well, would anybody be interested in just removing the limiter on there? Um, instead of having the limit to two hotels, one within the boundary of blah, 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 just removing that clause?
Well, and and we had an earlier recommendation of of giving the reason why that someone would recommending to add the wording that um, that says in an effort to limit the visual impact of taller buildings, the allowance a- and allowance of hotels at sixty five feet. So we did, you know, there has been a discussion about adding a reason why. Um, the reason why staff recommended it is because it's what we thought would be able to be stomached, um, to bring it forward. If there's no other real justification, if you guys want all, you know, allow hotels at sixty five feet in the zone, staff is is will is up for it and willing to take that motion and move it forward to council and let them know how you feel.
Yeah, Gary, if I may, I I think there's something about the way you bring up topics. It always works me back around to your opinion. The uh, because mine initially, I wasn't with you, but the um, I I think it does speak to what I said, though, is my gut tells me that the public would not be happy with this entire zone being full of sixty five foot tall hotels. I think that that's the, you know, you're right in the sense of the code. I don't think the code should dictate that, and that's why I had an issue with it initially. But if you if you if we go down that path of eliminating some kind of wording that says only a limited amount or something, keeping it, you have to run the 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 gauntlet all the way to the end of what does that look like if every single, every single building in that the this co- this uh, zone is sixty five foot tall hotels? I I I'm with the staff in that, where I don't think that's what the public wants. I don't think that's what the coach would allow for.
So do you think, though, that the public wants one sixty five foot hotel and ten thirty five foot hotels?
I think that's no. But I think that's stomach easier, right? I think that that's.
So then, why not? Well, un- until there's the fifth hotel being built and people going, you know, what's what's going on? So if if one is the right number because of the the view limitation, it it's really what what is driving the building height. It's the number of rooms in the hotel. So if if we looked at the the zone and the acreage of the zone, for example, and and had language that said the maximum number of hotel units in the IC zone is a hundred or two hundred or or whatever a sixty five foot four story hotel maximum capacity with a rooftop bar would be, then then that's the li- the limit isn't one hotel. The limit is, hey, we only want X amount of hotel units in this zone. in this zone. And if we get to a point where we we feel like the infrastructure in the community is more supportive of hotels, then then we can modify that limiting factor and consider further development of the zone for hotels in the manner that we think the public would be on board with. But right now, it feels like we really, at least for exit thirty one, there's one. I mean, there's there's one property owner that and and one potentially interested pro- project proponent that feels like a sixty five foot hotel is economically viable and might want to pursue that. And if they do that, that essentially kind of shuts down the conversation on how many more will there be? Right? I mean, the market might support one. We don't know if it would support more units. We won't know anything until there's something there. But to limit ourselves to one on the front end, when what we really want might want is to just limit the number of units and then see where that leads us and kind of go from there.
Yeah. Also, always the opportunity to come back and change the regulation. So regulations have to adapt over time. So you have new circumstances. And as long as you're bringing that back to the public through that public process, you can always consider future amendments.
Right.
Yeah, I I you might be on the right track there with a with a room quantity. I I I think it's the right call to to take this back and take some time to think about this. Just because
And I don't know.
I don't know. I'm not thinking of a good answer yet.
I, yeah, I'm not either of just kind of some some concepts, but if the architect or the property owner that spoke earlier are still on the line and you know, would be willing to put their minds on this and submit something to staff that might come back to us on the next look at this. You know, because that's what they do. Well, you know, I mean, they're they're so.
Yeah, I I think I think that's where we can have.
Yeah.
Yeah, staff input into this for the next meeting as well. Just if you could work with some people and see experts, right? And see if there's something that from from their opinion.
So kind of just to throw out a suggestion. If you had allowed two hotels at exit thirty one, the really those only location again would be at the outlet mall. The other properties are just too small. You'd have to combine properties, and that's really difficult to do when you've got different owners. So if you allowed two hotels, that may address your equity issue. Allow just one hotel at exit thirty four because there's nothing yet, nothing proposed. If if you were supportive of that, that would be a quick and easy way to continue this along. But but there is not a rush, so it could come back to the next planning commission meeting as well.
And if you'd like to reopen the public hearing and hear from everyone who'd like to speak on it again, you're you're that's up to the commission.
Yeah, I don't know if I'd want to. The I think we heard what we needed from the public, but at least from, you know, you guys can be the the source from the expertise side. They're working with who you already are working with. And I think, you know, you could take in some time, at least for me personally, I'd like to take some time to think about a possible possible wording or possible motion that would answer that question.
So I have a question. If we push it to another date and not make a recommendation, does that, is there a a legal requirement that we need to have another public hearing based on that new information or?
No, no, you can continue the item and further the discussion without continuing the public hearing. You've already closed the public hearing. It's done. It is now just would be continuing your deliberation.
Okay. Okay, so basically, it sounds like everybody's in agreement with the sixty five foot. It's just the the limiter of two hotels versus one hotel and that's where we're kind of uncomfortable with this particular modification. Okay. So is everyone in agreement to move this, to continue it to the next meeting?
Yes, I am.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike. I have October fourteenth.
Wonder here.
For the next meeting? Just want to announce it for anyone who wants to come. That's what I'm trying to verify.
October fourteen.
So we're hearing a possible looking for a motion to continue this item to the October fourteenth planning commission meeting.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion to continue this discussion to the October fourteenth meeting.
And I'll second. Commissioner Town seconds.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Does everybody agree? Say yay.
I.
I.
Any opposed? Sounds like it's unanimous. All right. That was a lot of heavy lifting. So well, I'd like to thank everybody, including the public who spoke today, the staff for all the information that you're giving us and all the commissioners and all the input. And I think we should adjourn the meeting at eight thirty six PM.
It's everyone.
Thank you.
All right, you all have a nice evening.
Good to see you.
You too, Mike.